Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. First, we're going to do the reorganization. Actually, let's first do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this is the zoning board of adjustment meeting for Tuesday, January 28, 2025. The notice requirements of the law have been satisfied. Notices have been sent by certified mail to the Home News Tribune. Receipts are on file in the township clerk's office. We ask that anyone that has a cellphone to please turn it off during the meeting. All variances granted tonight will expire if the building permit, zoning permit, or occupancy permit is not applied for within one year of the granting of the variance. No new applications will begin after 10:00 p.m., and the meeting will adjourn at 11:00 p.m. Any application may be discussed at the next agenda meeting. Kristen, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Almeida?
Here.
Mr. Goldenfar?
President.
Mr. Popcaskowski?
Here.
Mr. Scuturo?
Here.
Ms. Malat?
Here.
Mr. Bakmadala? Ms. Musley?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Hyman?
Here.
Okay, so we're going to do our annual reorganization of the 2025 board. I'm going to adjourn the 2024 board since it's no longer 2024, and I'm going to ask for a nomination for chairman of the Township of North Brunswick Zoning Board of Adjustment for 2025.
Brian Goldenfar, I'll make an application to nominate Chad Hayman.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Any further nominations? I will close the nominations if we can have a roll call, Kristen.
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Goldenfar?
Yes.
Mr. Popcaskowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scuturo?
Yes.
Ms. Malat?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Okay, based on that, I will hand the virtual gavel over to Mr. Hayman, and he will conduct the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, everybody, thank you. So with that being said, we also need to nominate a chairman, so I'd like to see if I can get a motion for somebody to nominate a vice chairman, please.
Mr. Brian, I'll nominate Jonathan Wright.
Can I get a second?
Yeah.
Is that Joe?
Yeah.
Roll call, Kristen?
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Goldenfar?
Yes.
Mr. Popcaskowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scuturo?
Yes.
Ms. Malat?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes. Okay, moving along, we're going to have to nominate a secretary. So if I can get a motion to nominate a secretary for 2025?
I'll make a motion to nominate, Kristen.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Who's that?
Kyla.
Thank you. Kristen, roll call?
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Goldenfar?
Yes.
Mr. Popcaskowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scuturo?
Yes.
Ms. Malat?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes. All right, so continuing with our resolutions for 2025, we have the Zoning Board of Adjustment Annual Report from 2024. Just need a motion to approve that annual report. If I can get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, Matt Almeida.
Thank you, Matt. I need a second, please.
I'll make.
Brian, roll call, Kristen?
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Goldenfar? Yes.
Mr. Popcaskowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scuturo?
Yes.
Ms. Malat?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Yes. I'm going to pause and just refer to Larry. We did have a change in our bylaws, so before we approve the bylaws for 2025, Larry, if you could just speak to that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, you know, there's been concern over the years about members of the public laboring on when they're speaking at hearings, so I think we particularly had that problem with the quick check. So one of the suggestions was that maybe we put a time limitation on members of the public to speak, which, by the way, is common in most municipalities. Most municipalities at a council meeting do have usually a five-minute limitation, and of course, that can be suspended. So my suggestion, and I wrote up some language here, it's Section 1:3-9, "Public Portion, any member of the public choosing to speak during any public portion of a meeting shall be subject to a five-minute limitation to make any comments. The board chairman reserves the exclusive right to extend said time limitation." And I think that's pretty common with a lot of municipalities, and I think at least it puts some control. And I'm not saying that, you know, we're going to have a clock here, but...
No, but to get an idea, I mean, we knew that that was going on and on, and I think we need to make sure that there's a certain time to that. So that was the only bylaw change that we had. So with that being said, can I get a motion to approve the bylaws that Larry read as well as everything else that we did have before?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Matt. A second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. Roll call, Kristen?
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Goldenfar?
Yes.
Mr. Popcaskowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scuturo?
Yes.
Ms. Malat?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes. The next one is professional service agreement with Larry Sacks for legal services from February 1, 2025 through January 31, 2026. So again, I need a motion to approve Larry to be our attorney for this coming year.
I'll make a motion to adopt Larry as our attorney.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Goldenfar?
Yes.
Mr. Popcaskowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scuturo?
Yes.
Ms. Malat?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes. And then finally, under our resolutions...
By the way, thank you, everybody, I appreciate that.
Congratulations, Larry. Finally, professional service agreement for Delaware Raritan Engineering Incorporated for engineering services from February 1, 2025 through January 31, 2026. I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Brian, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Second, somebody?
I'll second.
Joe? Roll call, Kristen, please?
Mr. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. Goldenfar?
Yes.
Mr. Popcaskowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scuturo?
Yes.
Ms. Malat?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes. So congratulations, everybody. All right, so for our memorializations, we have one memorialization. This is 1186 Livingston Avenue, LLC. The attorney is Jay Cho. It's regarding Block 137, Lot 9.02. It's a use in bulk variance for a six-foot fence located in the front yard area of multiple locations to construct and operate a farm stand and sell produce which is grown on the premises. It was an additional use variance to raise livestock, specifically up to, I believe we changed the number, Nigerian dwarf goats, and that was in a R3 residential zone.
I must say, by the way, I missed the meeting.
Yes, it was great.
I thoroughly enjoyed reading the transfer.
We have Nigerian dwarf goats, if anybody's interested in visiting them in North Brunswick. Now, we have dwarf goats in town, so I do need a motion to approve the memorialization.
I'll make a motion to adopt the memorialization.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kyla. Roll call, Kristen?
Mr. Goldenfar?
Yes.
Mr. Popcaskowski?
Yes.
Ms. Scuturo?
Yes.
Ms. Malat?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so for our meeting tonight, we have one carried application. It is the Bolero North Brunswick LLC. Address is 770-786 Caroler Lane. It's regarding Block 259, Lots 9.01 and 10.01. It's a bulk variance to replace an existing multi-tenant freestanding sign with a new 37-foot-high, 292.6-square-foot backlit sign 55 feet from the property line along Caroler Lane, and it is in a C2 commercial zone district. Mr. Stahl? There he is.
Hi.
Is this all right? Perfect.
Perfect.
It's perfect? It's been a long time since anyone used that phrase with me. It's a pleasure, it's a pleasure to be back here. I've got some more things, but I enjoy this board quite frankly and seriously. Congratulations to all, and I look forward to working with you. The application tonight, Larry, are we good on the notice?
Yes, yeah, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the affidavit of publication. We do have jurisdiction for this application this evening.
Okay, great, thank you.
Let me, and we're going to move along. Of course, I'm not trying to rush anyone, but I know the board likes to hear and then move on. This is an application for the sign for Bolero, and just my witness will testify, because I was as surprised as you were. Bolero's Lucky Strike is a brand name owned by Bolero. My witness will testify to it. It does not change the corporate structure. Bolero is a publicly traded corporation, and they're going to change their brand from different locations. This location will remain Bolero on the sign. In the future, if the sign name changes, we'll go and get a building, strike that, a sign permit and change the slats, but there is no change of ownership. Bolero, as you all know, has been a longtime business in this community, and they intend to stay. The history of this very briefly, we have been before the board before, and there were certain issues with regard to size and location identification of tenants. I gave Larry the most recent submission, which was attached to the application. We're looking for a bulk variance to replace what we've say is an inadequate sign from our vantage point, not from yours, with a new 37-foot-high interior-lit sign of approximately 292.6 feet. I have a representative, a regional vice president of Bolero here, and I have a sign gentleman who's got quite a few years of experience. The reason that will be articulated to you is Bolero acquired the property some, well, maybe three to five years ago. I don't recall when we did the closing. It was right before COVID. They bought and then bing, COVID came along and shut them down for a while. So the new sign seeks to listen to you, provide a sign that's 37 feet in height, identify the existing tenants, and will allow them to be recognized. I'm not going to, I'm just going to lay out the plan. The plan is, we believe this is a huge piece of property. We only want one sign, but we want a classy sign of character, not what's there right now, which we can discuss going up and down the highway. You really, I don't think it's entirely that visible, plus with the service road. I don't want to get into that, but we want a better sign. We want a higher sign, and my sign, and I don't call him expert, I'll call him an expert for now. We've gone up and down the highway, and we've got 37-foot signs, 35-foot signs, 53-foot signs. We've got the Maloof signs, we've got the Shop signs, and this is not going to be something that's obnoxious or offensive, because you've got to remember, this piece of property is what we would call a sea of asphalt. I wish in the old days we could have put some more greenery, but, you know, when the kids are there, when I say kids, the bowling kids and the adult kids who go there with the leagues, that place can get pretty well filled up. But we also want to give our tenants a chance, a chance to be recognized. I know that Brian, one of Brian's concerns was back then, that, you know, give me more visibility, and I'm not, I'm just trying to identify the issues, and Brian was concerned about that, and so were other members, that give us a sign that people will see, will come by and will come into the, I call it a mini strip center. I don't know whether you have five or how many. So that's where we are for today. I'm going to call my first witness. Larry, I'll mark that as soon as I get Michael on. Michael, why don't you bring the chair around so you and I can, before you sit, stand, raise your right hand?
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. All right, please state your name, spelling your last name, and your affiliation with the applicant.
My name's Michael Britt, last name is B-R-I-T-T, Regional Vice President for Lucky Strike Entertainment and Bolero Corporation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now, Michael, keep your voice up, because the microphones are both of us, and I don't want you to be shy. You've indicated you are Vice President of Bolero, is that correct?
Yes.
What's your exact title?
Regional Vice President of Operations.
And what is your region?
I oversee a region called Eastern Seaboard. It's 36 locations, kind of going up and down the northeast area.
And is the North Brunswick location one of your locations?
Yes, it is.
And are you responsible for that location?
I am.
Does Bolero now own that location?
Yes.
And there has been a question, I just wanted on the record from you as opposed to me, the Lucky Strike logo or name, what exactly is that?
So we purchased Lucky Strike Bowling on September 18, 2023. When we purchased Lucky Strike, it was just under our umbrella name of Bolero Corporation. Our company recently decided in December to rebrand our company from Bolero Corporation to Lucky Strike Entertainment, because it just had better brand recognition, et cetera. There are no plans currently to rebrand Bolero North Brunswick to a Lucky Strike location. It's same ownership, we're still publicly traded, but it was just an overall parent name change. Once we acquired the Lucky Strike brand, we decided as a company to rebrand Lucky Strike Entertainment from Bolero Corporation.
Now, you as a Vice President in conjunction with other officers of Bolero made a decision that you want to change the sign, is that correct?
Yes.
Tell the board, please, in your own words, why did you want to do that?
We purchased the, before, when I first took location number 2018, we didn't own the property. We were actually paying rent for that building where we were. I don't know, remember exactly the year, but to your point, probably around COVID time, we actually purchased the entire property. We did not have any type of pylon. We still do not have any type of road signage currently on our property at all. And then with the owning of the property, we owned the tenant spaces next door as well. So we brought in a kickboxing tenant there that took up three of those locations. We're in the final stages of leasing out a couple more to another, like, entertainment industry. We had a pizzeria there, and so really just trying to get better visibility for our tenants, but also for our bowling center as well, because the only signage we really have is flat on the building, that you can't see from anywhere on Route 1.
Well, let me, I'm going to ask you the question that the board's going to ask you. You got the words Bolero on the building, is that correct?
Yes.
Why do you need another sign that identifies it as Bolero?
Mainly because you can't see it going down Route 1 whatsoever. If you're looking on your GPS and you're trying to see where Bolero is, you're having to constantly go like this.
Meaning you're turning your head right and left?
You're turning your head left and right, and I think with, we think with a pylon, people will be able to see it better, and they can still focus on the road in front of them.
And it will also, as I've said probably three or four times, better identify the tenants in the strip center, is that correct?
Yes.
Are there any other reasons? And there don't have to be.
No.
All right. Before I release him to you to cross-examine, Michael, the, as I recall in our prior hearings and presentation, you were agreeable to all of the comments of Mr. Charles Carley of Delaware Raritan Engineering, is that correct?
Yes.
There were issues with regards to curbing around the sign, although that might have been Mr. Profaci's, and Mr. David will testify as to how the sign will be bolted, installed, and that will all be done in accordance with the North Brunswick Building Code and Building Inspector, is that correct?
Yes.
And even though he will testify, it's an interior-lit sign and will not therefore cast light onto the highway, is that correct?
Correct.
And there are no residences with, you know the property, yes?
Yes.
And as far as you know, there's no residences that will be affected by this particular sign?
Correct.
Any more than they're affected by a bowling alley?
Correct.
Okay. I have nothing further as this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for this gentleman? Nothing at all? Nothing? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
David, you're up.
Sir, if you could do the same, stand, raise your right hand.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. All right, please state your name, spelling your last name, and your affiliation with the applicant.
My name's David Dele, I say the D-E-L-E-L-L-I.
And your affiliation?
I work as a senior project manager for Persona Triangle Signs.
I qualify him, okay, I'm sorry, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a seat, David. The hot seat or the cold seat. David, by whom are you presently employed?
Persona Triangle Signs.
How long have you been so employed?
Two years.
And did you work for any sign companies before then?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes? How many companies and how many years?
I worked for United Sign Systems for 20 years. I worked for Jones Signs for one year, and I've actually worked in the sign industry as a minor, even. I'm fourth generation in the sign industry.
All right, do you have an interest in the company, or you're just an employee?
Just an employee.
And I don't mean the word just, I don't want to demean you.
Yeah, no, no, just an employee.
All right. And during your employment, have you and the company also installed other signs along Route 1 north and south of this location?
Yes, sir.
In fact, some of the auto signs were constructed by your company, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Open Road BMW, Mini of Edison.
All right, and with regard, I'm going to get into the pictures or itself, but the construction of the sign, strike that, the installation of the sign, you have a guess as to how many signs of this size your company may have installed the last two years?
We've probably done hundreds of them.
How many?
Probably hundreds of them.
Hundreds?
That size, yes.
So I can therefore assume that you're familiar with how a sign is constructed?
Yes, sir.
And the agreement is an understanding that all the requirements of the building code, the building inspector, Mr. Carley, who's the engineer, Mr. Profaci, who's the zoning officer, will be fully and completely complied with, is that correct?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, the sign itself, I gave Larry one, but I'm going to...
Well, I have...
No, let me, you hold that for the board.
In fact, I'm going to mark this, Mr. Stahl.
We're going to mark that as A1, is that correct?
A1, and I put today's date. It's a colorized version of the proposed sign. I'll pass it down, and members of the board can look at it while you're describing.
Well, I'm going to show you the uncolorized version. First of all, A1, Larry?
A1.
I'm going to show you an uncolorized version of the sign. It's indicating its persona, signs. My eyes were, oh, now this is from August 23, 2023, is that correct?
Yes.
And that is the current sign proposed, is that correct?
Yes, that is the current proposed.
And the proposed, it would say, put high sign from the ground to the top of the sign, from ground level to the top of the Bolero sign, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then underneath that, there are placards or slats for tenants, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, let me ask you if the, and this may just be something that Mr. Profaci will have to regulate, to the extent there are less than eight tenants, because there are eight slats there, and if I come to you and I'm going to rent a location for ice cream or something, depending on how much space I rent, will you give me a larger sign? Is that up to the owner?
That'd be up to the owner. The panels can be converted to make them larger, though.
All right, because I don't think we have eight tenants in there or contemplate that. And it's interior lit, which means lighting is from the inside, is that correct?
That is correct.
No spotlights or outside lights on the sign?
No spotlights.
And why, in your experience, would Bolero want, tell me why you think this type of a sign is something that is appropriate for the site?
Well, judging by the site itself, the visibility of this sign is really, it's actually a good visibility. It's a little smaller than the usual signs that they like to do. Legibility-wise, it would be very legible, internally illuminated with LEDs, so that the power consumption be low, the, I'm sure we've all seen signs that have outages on them, have out, you will not usually ever see that with LEDs. If it is, it's a very quick fix, so it doesn't bring an eyesore.
So it's an energy efficient as well as everything else?
It is.
LED, did you say?
LEDs.
All right. That's not something within my expertise. Now, did you go up and down Route 1 north and south?
I did.
And based upon that review, did you see signs that were larger and lower than the proposed Bolero sign?
Yes.
And I'm just going to show you, and we can put them into evidence if the board wants, but I'd like to just identify some of these signs going north and south in the height, just quickly, I don't want to bore them. Let's do the first one, if you will.
Now, Mr. Stahl, you want to mark that A2? I know you have a series of signs, which, by the way, may have been provided, I think, in the previous application.
I saw them. Yeah, they were submitted earlier.
They were.
I want to give them...
All right, so let's...
Should be in the file, but I'm going to give them to you anyway.
All right, we'll mark it as A2, because I don't have it.
I'll show you first a Walmart sign, which would be A2 or 3?
2.
2? He's always good at math.
You know what, I'll tell you what, instead of marking each one, we'll mark the series of these packet as A2, and you could just refer to the actual sign.
So did you see the Walmart sign?
I did see the Walmart.
And that, can you confirm, get into a measurement, but based upon prior measurements by Bolero, that shows 40 feet, is that correct?
That is correct.
And I don't want to editorialize, but it's got rather large tenant space on it, is that correct?
Correct.
And then we have the Regal Cinemas, which looks to be 32 feet, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then we have Main Street, which we're all familiar with, with Costco and Target, and that's 36 feet.
That is correct.
And then we have the Maloof Buick GMC, and that is 37 feet, is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm not going to waste, I'm just going through the, oh, then we have the Hertz Fingers Radiator, Fingers having been in this town longer than I am old, probably, and that is 37 feet, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then I think I did, Brunswick Shops is 53 feet, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the, well, I don't want to use the Chamberlain University, that's, that doesn't That's, that doesn't fit within the, and then Commerce Center is 37 feet?
Yes, 37, correct.
And with regard to the proposed sign that Bolero and you are proposing, is the total square footage basically less than these signs? And is the overall height within the general height of these other signs I identified?
It is within the general height and within the square footage.
And to be fair, there are other signs, smaller signs along the way, that I have not used, which, for instance, Toyota, the diner, and North Village Shopping Center, those are all in the 20s in terms of height. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I don't want to try and mislead or hide anything. But the ones I've identified for you are principally the large signs on Route One. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And not that you went out there with a surveying tool, but eyeballing, is the Bolero site really probably one of the largest in square footage of the parking lot of all of these locations?
It probably is one of the largest.
In other words, it's got a small sign on a large piece of property?
Right.
As opposed to some of these which are large signs on a lesser property?
That is correct.
All right. Did I miss anything? Hey, Jeremy, where'd he go? Can you just give this to that young man, my associate? You'll see him here too eventually. Jeremy Smith. To that young man?
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. So those will be marked, right, Larry?
A2, A2.
A2.
Danny, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Perfect. Does anybody have any questions for this witness? I do have one question. I was taking a look at the sign that you have. I was just wondering if you are traveling from Route One South, heading Route One North, you have both a side profile and a front profile. So is the sign going to be located that a passerby on Route One is going to be looking at the side profile of the sign? Or will they, when they pass it, look at the front profile? I guess my question is, is they're traveling down Route One, will the sign be catching them as they see it? Or will they get to the Bolero property and then have to look to the right to see the sign?
The sign should catch their, catch their vision coming down Route One.
Let me ask you a question. You're, for a big guy, you've got a low voice, so...
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm a little tired.
I pick on everyone, don't worry.
Do you understand, I guess the question would be, would it be parallel or perpendicular?
That's, thank you. That's, is the sign going to be perpendicular to Route One?
Sorry. It's been a while since I've been in school, so I apologize. I've got to think about this a second. It's actually perpendicular. Perpendicular.
It forms a T?
Yes, it forms a T.
With Route One?
So the, to add a...
Your feet are front.
The current sign is parallel. This one is going to be perpendicular, correct?
Driving down one, you'll see this. So it is perpendicular to, isn't it?
Yeah, because currently, right now, when we, I drove that today just to take a look. I mean, I've been in that, your parking lot forever. But when I'm on Route One, and if I'm not aware of your property, when I come down Route One, when I get to the location, I technically have to turn my head to the right to see your sign and all the signs associated with it.
Right.
So my question is, is if now I am 100 yards down the road, am I going to see in front of me, to the right, a Bolero sign coming up to me?
With the, I'm sorry, you...
With the sign?
Go ahead.
With the current sign that's there? I'm sorry.
No, I just have to make sure...
With the current sign that is there, it's more off of the service road?
Correct.
The new sign will be a little bit closer to the service road, so that way you'll have more visibility from US1 coming down that way, so you'll be able to see it sooner because currently with it so far inside off the service road, that's why you don't see it till the last minute, because it's so far off.
Okay.
But being closer and some of our parking spots, like one of our parking spots closer to the service road, you'll have better visibility of it coming down US1.
You're better at math because you seem younger than the rest. When, as you look at the sign, is the sign perpendicular to Route One?
Correct.
Or is it parallel to Route One?
Perpendicular.
All right, so when you're coming down Route One, you will see it, and you don't have to wait till you're parallel with it?
Correct.
So then the question would be, the inverse question would be, so we just talked about south heading north. So my question next is, how about north heading south?
I think north heading south, we find, there's no real blockages down Route One. It's mostly south coming north because you're coming up beneath that bridge.
Under the bridge.
And then that's when you're approaching it. So it being closer to the service road, as you go underneath that bridge, you'll be able to see it easier.
Okay.
Coming the opposite direction, there's no obstruction to the view of it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, for the purposes of putting up a sign, you know, when you travel down the road, you see something coming up to you instead of it being right there and then looking.
Correct.
So, and I'm also interested for the tenants there, that people know that there's going to be a boxing, a pizza place, an entertainment, something is, you see it coming instead of looking and saying, oh, wow, I'm going to the next place.
Correct.
Okay. That's my only question that I have. Anybody else have questions?
Going to be double-sided sign?
Yes, who else?
Yeah, just a couple of questions.
Sure.
What time does the bowling alley close?
We close at 11:00 p.m. On the weekends, we close at 1:00 a.m.
All right. So would, I'm assuming the applicant wouldn't have any problem with having the sign turned off after, so 11:00 p.m. on the weekdays?
Correct.
So maybe an hour after you close down on the, on weekdays, and then an hour after you close down on the weekends?
Correct.
Okay. Because, and the reason I suggest that is, we actually have billboards on Route One that we require them to be off at a certain time as well.
Correct, yeah.
So, all right. All right. And then I know Mr. Carley had a couple of comments about landscaping. Is there any landscaping proposed at the base of the sign? I don't think there was. And I don't, I'm not even sure it's really necessary, but...
I'm sorry, I'm having...
Landscaping.
I think that Sal or Charlie had suggested, I, whatever the, I would say, I'll make it easy. Whatever the staff wants, there's very little we can do there because you get a lot of blown...
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I'll defer to Charlie maybe.
Yeah, if I can. And thank you, Larry, for that endorsement of my comment. That was great. The, I do mention, if you're going to propose landscaping on the island of the proposed sign, show it. The thing that I do recommend is protecting the proposed sign either with bollards or raised curb, because it's going to be in a parking field, and there's going to be cars going this way and that way. And I think the gist of the application is, really cuts to the chairman's commentary. It's enhanced perspicuity. The sign, or the proposed sign, would be 37 feet tall. It'd be a bit bigger and a bit taller than the existing sign. LED, and I'll rely on the gentleman from the sign company to correct me if I'm wrong, pops a bit more than the sign that's out there now, which is backlit, but it's probably fluorescent, right? Probably 1985 technology. And so you'll have a sign that pops a little bit more. And the enhanced perspicuity does add to a little bit of safety in terms of turning motions into the place from Carolier, I believe, because people, to your point, Chairman, will say, ew, I better get ready to turn into Bolero. That's my opinion. And that's, you know, I have a very brief report from October, which really speaks to that. I have really nothing more to add unless Mr. Stall wants to correct me or otherwise.
Yeah, I was just going to ask two more questions to his point. I, I've been there before. I've seen accidents right on Carolier Lane where cars are coming around that turn. So I would just ask if it would be considerable if you would put some sort of barrier around that sign? Because as cars are coming down Carolier Lane or making that turn, that's...
The last reason why is for someone to knock down the sign, and regardless of insurance, have to spend the money to repair it.
I mean, there, there are utility poles there that cars have hit, so, you know, I'm hoping that maybe if you do put something around that sign...
Is there preference, the bollards around the sign or a curb?
That would be up to Charlie, because something that...
Protect the sign at all costs, because you're going to make a, if the board approves this, the sign will be a significant investment, unless this gentleman's going to work for free. I don't expect that to be the case. And so you or the property owner, I think the property owner is the Bolero. It's called V-Bowling. It says the, the property owner. And so I'm making the, the jump. And so they'll want to protect their sign. And so how do you do that? That's up to you to figure out, whether it's bollards, curb, guide rail. It's something that you'll want to be aesthetically pleasing, but you're going to want to protect the sign.
Okay.
I personally don't think a curb is going to help if you can get something higher. So if a car hits it, huff that curb.
I mean, if it were me, I would, I'm not a, I would like a, some type of curbing, a higher wall. You may want to think, because bollards, no one likes bollards, at least because cars come and knock them down. But Charlie, whatever...
These are all you decisions.
Yeah. So you decide. Obviously Charlie will review it.
The last question I just have for you is just in regards to the signs for the tenants. I see in A1, it's about, I think, two feet. It mentions that it's two feet high.
Two feet high by six foot nine wide.
Yeah.
So currently, and I don't have the measurements for the sign of your tenants now, but how big is that advertising for each location? The advertisement of the sign for, do you know off the top of your head?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay. I guess my question would be, is just in your opinion, is two feet big enough for tenants or for travelers or people coming in at that rate of speed to see them, that, you know, that they have a place of business there? You're going to have, I mean, I see it's almost like a 60-40 Bolero and then, you know, everybody else. I'm just interested if you feel that two feet is big enough for people to see.
We're going to, whatever the board decides. I just don't, does two feet make a difference?
No, I was just wondering, just if, it's not two feet. I was just, that was one of the concerns that we had last time, that...
No, you're right.
That, you know, the, the tenants maybe not have the adequate size for them to advertise their business. So I was just more wondering if just in the past, other locations have higher and bigger names of everybody there. Certainly, it's your facility, so you want Bolero to pop.
Right.
I just want to also just make sure that that size of the name of their business is big enough, regardless if it's one and a half feet, three feet, two feet, five feet, whatever it is, that just in your opinion, that is big enough for a car to see and recognize that there is a pizza place, you know, so on and so forth.
I do think so.
Okay.
I think, if I recall correctly, the original sign we proposed, that was the feedback we got, the tenant spaces were too small, and that's when we revised it to the size that's on the drawing now.
Okay.
And to your point earlier, we do have, like, the boxing place took up a couple of the tenant spaces.
Right.
But we're really, to your point, I don't think we're going to have eight tenants in there, so we would definitely do what we were talking about earlier, combining some of those sections and work with David.
Because Larry, a condition of the approval could be that the second portion of the sign with the tenants, that's the limit of the tenant space. And the landlord can, can move that around based upon the tenant need.
Okay.
So if he has a pizza place that's large, that's the largest tenant, he can give them a percentage.
Correct.
It gives them the latitude.
Right.
But he can't, we can't go any larger than that dimension tenant space under the main sign.
Yeah. And, yeah.
And roundabout, that's where I was getting at. You know, the pizza place has been there for a long time. You know, the boxing place just moved in, but it certainly brings in a lot of business. Whatever is going to go into that karaoke and hookah lounge, I'm sure that's two or three spots. So, you know, you're going to have different places that may have bigger signs. Would, would the signage appropriately show that?
The owner can do what they want. He's extended, let's say the pizza guy's been there longer than anyone else. He, they want to give him a larger space. I don't know what's in the leases. They want to give him a larger space, even though he may be smaller to someone else, but he's been there for umpteen years. They can do that, because as long as they stay within the area.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you've got 40% of that sign, or the signage, is devoted to other tenants other than Bolero. You'll carve it up as you see fit. And if I, I think, my recollection of testimony at the last hearing is, yeah, let's face it, am I going to see a two-foot sign traveling 65 miles an hour? No, I'm not, okay? But the, the interesting thing is, the access to this shopping center is not directly off of Route One. You've got to come in off of Carolier. And Jim, if I recall, the testimony last time was, once, you know, once you're in that shopping center and you see the sign, you're going to say, oh, the pizza place is in here. Or, you know, Jim Stall's law office is in here.
Or Larry Sacks Golf Center.
Correct. Larry Sacks Golf, exactly. So, yes. So I, we understand the premise of why you need, but, you know, again, that's up to the tenant. It's up to the landlord to decide how much they wanted to vote to each tenant, so.
Good. Okay. Any other questions for this witness?
Sure. Chen.
Yes. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, Jonathan.
If I recall correctly, the previous application was for a monopole. This application seems to be for a...
Two years, oh, I think it was two years.
Like, like one, one pole in the ground. This application seems to be two poles in the ground. Many of the other exhibits that we have in A2 are, I think, what we would characterize as monument signs. They're sort of a, a structure that grows up into a sign. Can you speak to a little bit why, why a client would make various considerations to adopt any of those proposals?
So if you're, can you just put the drawing back up for a second? Sorry. I just want to...
All right, can we...
While you're...
I have to say that I can bring it up on my phone.
Oh, I have them here. You looking for the exhibits?
Yes.
Well, actually, looking at them, let's see. Commerce Center is not a monument. Yeah. Walmart is. Regal Cinema is, is not. Main Street is. Maloof is not. Fingers...
Every other one is.
Fingers is a monopole, by the way. I had a radio stolen out of my car at Fingers when I needed a radiator replaced in the 1970s. Okay? Still in business. And LA Fitness is, is not. So, yeah. Is that what you, you need? Okay, all right. Okay, all right. So, well, anyway, I think the question is, you can answer the question.
So with a monument sign, of course, you have a full base enclosed in a parking lot. That means you can't see anything past that sign.
Okay.
In that space. With the open poles where they are, you can still have visibility past the sign, which helps, of course, keep down, I hate to say it this way, but traffic accidents in a parking lot. Most monument signs are utilized in landscape beds, usually in most jurisdictions, if they require the sign off the parking lot in the landscaping bed. A monopole, and of course, the monopole sign, I know that, I was told that that wasn't really, it looked positive upon. It's older-looking now. A lot of companies have actually gone away from that design.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Nothing? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So I guess we'll go to the public. If I could make a motion to close this portion and open the public? Just doesn't seem like there's too many people here that are knocking at the door, but...
Make a motion to open to the public.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I'll second it.
If there's anybody here from the public, please step up.
Not all at once.
Not all at once?
I'll make a motion to close.
Thank you, Jonathan. Somebody needs to second?
I'll second.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So we heard the testimony, folks. Thoughts? Comments? Any other questions that we have?
So the sign is going to say Bolero, correct?
Correct.
There's no plan, I mean, there's no current plan, because, you know, I don't like to, all of a sudden tomorrow you see it, then my integrity is some question. No, there's no, there's no current plan to change it. If, as indicated by Michael, if corporate decides they want to brand this particular site, then I'd have to give a sign from Al, and then we would change it.
Probably wouldn't be doing that because it says Bolero all over your building, so it's going to cost a little bit to do also. That would take a lot. Anybody else? I need a motion to either approve or deny this application.
This, Brian, I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you very much.
With the modification of having something around it, just for protection of everybody.
And the lighting. The, the lighting off after, an hour after shut down.
Based on the conditions that we spoke about.
Second up?
Thank you, Joe.
I'm sorry. I have a quick question. Is it dangerous to shut all the lights off because then you can't see the pole driving through the parking lot?
You do, I don't want to testify for you, but there, there is lighting throughout that parking lot, correct?
Lights that are on.
Yeah, the parking lot lights will be on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it is pretty bright in that parking lot.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
All the parking lot lights are LED. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
And they're out, they're on throughout the night, I'm assuming, right?
There's a timer on them, so like, a couple hours after we close, after our staff leaves, and then they would go off.
Okay. All right.
You still have some security lighting there.
Yes.
Got it. All right. So Brian made a motion to approve. Joe seconded. Kristen, can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Alveda?
Yes.
Paul Far.
Yes.
Mr. Polakaschow?
Yes.
Mr. Jaccorbo?
Yes.
Ms. Mellet?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
Ms. Bell.
Yes. I think we came to a, I'm glad you came back. I'm glad we got to hear your proposal and revision, and I, I say yes as well.
That's the way it system goes to work. You gave a suggestion, we came back and, look, even in North Brunswick, as a tenant now, or, their only interest is being a good neighbor.
Yeah. And I, and I, I thank you for coming back. My biggest concern, again, was just also to make sure that some of those tenants that didn't there for a while, that's their livelihood as well, and I want to make sure that they get the recognition also. But yes. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I give it to the...
Oh, yeah. Yes. Jonathan has made a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Oh, here. Evidence.